Good evening and welcome to the Granville County Board of Commissioners meeting, Monday, June 19, 2023. Thank you for being here tonight. At this time, if Commissioner Jimmy Gooch could lead us in a prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Would you join me in prayer, please? Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you give us. We thank you for all this world you have given us to live in. We appreciate everything you've done for us. Please look after our children and our elderly and lead, guide, and direct us tonight to make the decisions as best for the citizens of our county. Amen.
Good morning, simple pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Good evening, Board. We have one item on the budget, on the consent agenda, Budget Amendment Number Eight for the fiscal year 2223. Do I have a motion by the Board? Move for approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman. Second Cozart moves to approve. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Williford? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right now, I'd like to recognize that Mr. Jonathan David Hayes, if Mr. Hayes, our Eagle Scout, could come forward, please. I'll meet him on the podium, along with Commissioner Karen.
Sir, he's a junior.
Junior.
He's a junior.
I can go for this one, too?
We don't want Dad coming up.
I have your Mom and Dad joining us after I presented to you. Are you at that? Good. JJ, or Jonathan, part of the Eagle Scout, Jonathan David Hayes, Jr. Whereas, the rising high school senior Jonathan David Hayes, Jr., took the old seat of the animal clapping eagle apart. Their strong therapy and humility can be attributed to being a member of the Scouts at an early age, but it began with the inside of the spirit Jonathan Daniel Hayes noticing and nurturing his talents. And whereas, ten years of service in 20416, Jonathan worked his way to serve many leadership positions, including seat patrol leader, troop guide, assistant seat patrol leader, patrol leader, and chaplain's aide, all while the same decade was also serving community and working on different community projects. And, with all this crew, Eagle Scout. And whereas, his sense of community, JJ, has seen so many call work on projects such as helping with replacing one of the roofs at the Oxford, the home to children, helping build a horse shelter at Shepherd's U. French in Three More, assisting in collecting retiring hundreds of Americans' lives in Three More by their mistake, and lending out many other beautiful stations and projects, but this no way equates his achievement as a scout in 20416. And whereas, JJ has been awarded the National Outdoor Achievement Award for camping and the National Outdoor Achievement Award for biking, and with at least 25 miles of camping, hundreds of correct miles behind the community service and good citizenship, Jonathan David Hayes, Jr. achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. He, of course, when above the required 21 American active to achieve the Eagle Scout rank, he acquired 56. And whereas, JJ, way of excellence filtered over into his academics as a member of the National Honor Society and the National Technical Honor Society. He is a scholar athlete and graduating in the top 10 of the 2024 senior graduating class at South Ramble High School. The Vikings, along with the way, he played JV football and soccer. And as the captain of the Oak Parks and Congrats team, led us to the two consecutive conference championships, tournament conference championships that were represented in South Ramble at the North Town High School Athletic Association, individual 2A reperformance and the 2A safe performance, placing him in the top 16 wrestlers in the state of North Carolina in his weight class. And whereas, now therefore being resolved, the Granville County Board of Commissioners extends its sincere graduation, gratulations to Jonathan David Hayes, Jr. for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout and for his academic and community accomplishments. Mom and Dad, will you come up, please? Come on, Dad. Come on, Jonathan. We often, we often don't acknowledge our people. I think he's a classic example of our good hands. Outstanding citizen, outstanding job. Part of very important work providing help, man. Thank you.
Yeah, you might as well stay out, right? Good evening. So our next agenda item is to recognize Keegan Raps' contribution to Granville County during his 2022-2023 Lead for North Carolina Fellowship. Hard to believe it's been almost a year since we stood here and introduced Keegan to you all. But the program year ends on June 30th, and Keegan will be leaving Granville County to pursue certification to teach English as a foreign language and begin teaching abroad at a rural high school in Japan. His next educational goal is to attend the MPA program at UNC Chapel Hill. During his time with Granville County this past 11 months, Keegan worked with administration, library system, and cooperative extension on a variety of assignments. He managed several proposals for us, including the process for the Granville Athletic Park ADA Transition Plan. He provided research and editorial content for the strategic plan updates and many other county projects. Also persevering to eventually sign on 29 partners for the library system's farm-to-fridge program, and he assisted with numerous team leadership initiatives. So at this time, I'd like to invite Keegan to come up, be recognized by the Board.
Would you like to stand? Oh, this is my dad.
All right.
There you go. Keegan, this is specifically to recognition of word Keegan Raps, from 2022 to 2023, Lead for North Carolina Fellowship, and appreciation for your authentic service during your fellowship with Granville County, North Carolina, presented this 19th edition, 2023. Keegan, you've been an outstanding representative, and you've worked very hard. And, you know, I don't think there's a single day that I've seen you that you weren't smiling and you weren't doing something. So we appreciate all that you've done on behalf of Commissioners, on behalf of the county, and obviously, if any other Commissioner would like to say something, you're welcome to. But I'd like to provide this to you on our behalf. Would your dad can come up here, please? You want to give yourself a sound?
Thank you very much, Keegan.
Thank you, Keegan. Keegan, been a real pleasure.
Thank you for living this way.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No issue.
And thank you. You're the nicest person in the entire town.
Before I move on to public comments, I just want to say, Keegan and Jonathan, again, it's a, each time we do something like this, I know it's gratifying to the Board. It's actually one of the most rewarding things you get to do as Commissioners, acknowledge those in our community that are giving back above and beyond. And, you know, their sole motivation is, is that they just want to serve. And that servant's heart is often what carries you through a career, not the financial gain or not the notoriety, but actually giving back to others. So I want to again thank you both on behalf of our Board. It's a, we have great assets in both of you, and I'm glad you're, Keegan, I hope you'll find a way to hustle back here. And Jonathan, I hope that through your technical training and your, you won't steer far from Granville. Thank you. If I now could for public comments, I think most of the people on the public comments page have spoken before, so I think you understand the rules. It'll be three minutes. At two minutes, you'll get a yellow card, or two and a half minutes, you'll get a yellow card. And then at the three minutes, you'll get a red card. So we look forward to hearing from you. Mr. Paul Blalock, if you could give us your name and address when you come to the podium, please.
Paul Blalock, 1593 Tallyhoe Road, STEM. Certainly is a good positive thing that y'all started out with recognizing these two people. And congratulations on your achievements. Of course, ever since I found out about the proposed ETJ in STEM, I've been here every meeting. And I feel like that I kind of sound like a broken record, and I feel like that I'm a pester to y'all. But it's a very important issue to me that the ETJ doesn't pass. I'm guess most of the people who are against the ETJ are actually at the STEM meeting to force their opposition tonight. I chose to come here because eventually, the STEM will present the ETJ to you guys to either approve it or disapprove it. For me, the first issue, of course, most of us feel like it's just a stepping stone to annexation. But in the beginning, if the ETJ were to pass, and we got the letter from the CARTA, Regional Council of Government, letting us know about the public hearing on July the 12th at the STEM Ruption Building. And in that letter, it says that if the ETJ is approved, that we would have to go by the STEM zoning ordinances. For me, Granville County, I think we all understand that we don't have any choice but to grow. But having controlled growth and not grow too fast for the county to be able to handle it is very important. I believe that the way the county ordinances are, that you're achieving that, you're able to grow and you're able to handle that growth. But if you grow too fast, then it can present all kinds of problems of not being able to handle the growth. So just a few examples of that, if you go to the, some of the new developments that have taken place in STEM, there are houses right on top of each other, and it's a lot of growth in a small area. I believe that all of us in the ETJ area are in a lot better hands, and Granville County as a whole is in a lot better hands, if Granville County keeps control over our zoning and doesn't allow STEM to have that control. So I appreciate the service of each and every one of you, and I hope that when this does come before you, that you will continue to keep control over the growth of Granville County and not allow STEM to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blalock.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. My name is Michaela Wilkins, and I live at 3145 Tom Wilkins Road. And tonight, I just wanted to talk to you about...
Ms. Wilkins, could you speak up some?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
There you go.
There we go. And tonight, I just wanted to talk to you about something that's actually on theme, which is returning to Granville County. My great-great-grandfather bought land in Granville County, and he bought enough to ensure that his family would forever have a home here. And his intention was for everyone, every member of his family, as he put it, to always have a place to welcome them home. And he didn't care if we left. He just wanted us to always know that we were welcomed here. And my great-grandfather was Thaddeus, Tom, the road is named after him. My grandfather is James Wilkins, and my great-uncle is Robert Wilkins. My father is Terry Wilkins, and my aunt, Christie Wilkins Campbell. And then myself, Michaela, and my brother Jonathan, we have been here for five generations. Nobody has left. Every single person that built land, that built property, excuse me, oh my gosh, built a home on the land, on the property that he gave us, has stayed. Nobody has left. And we would like to stay here for several more generations. If you notice, most of us have stayed, and even those of us who have left have returned. I was educated in Durham. I went to Durham Academy, and then I went to Med of College in Raleigh, where I received a double major and graduated with honors. And I came right back home to Granville County, because it is home and it is where I wanted to be. And I have always wanted to be able to stay out here and to be able to homestead out here. Every decision that I have made thus far in my life has been to further the goal of having my own homestead out here. My mother still resides in Granville County, even after my father's passed, and she'd like to be here for the rest of her life. My brother and I have inherited the land that would have been my father's, and we intend to build a homestead on it and a farm for both of us. My, both of my cousins, Christie's children, also intend to live out here and homestead out here. This has been our home for 100 years. We will be the fifth generation to love this land and to work this land, and this ETJ puts that in jeopardy, because the dreams and the goals that I have had my whole life will be called into question if this is passed. I have never wanted anything more than to stay out here. I have traveled the world. I have gone to different countries and different cities, all sorts of places, and there's nowhere on earth I would rather call home than here. And on the subject of people returning to Granville County, I have, and most of our people have never left, and we want the opportunity to live out here. And we feel that this ETJ calls that into question. And we're not opposed to sustainable growth, but one thing that we know is sustainable is the way that we have lived out here on this land for 100 years. Thank you.
Sure, Blausch. If I mispronounce your name, ma'am, please correct it for me.
That's all right. Loudish is pretty darn close. Can you hear me okay?
Louder.
A little louder?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lean into it.
Lean into it.
There you go.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Blausch. I live at 3109 Tom Wilkins Road, within the proposed STEM ETJ. I'm asking you to please vote no to the STEM ETJ. I've heard meeting after meeting where concerned citizens speak out against this ETJ. I have reviewed the UDO proposed or posted by the town of STEM, and I previously sent out emails to each of you stating my reasons for not wanting our property, where we built our dream home in rural Granville County, to be under STEM town jurisdiction. I appreciate the work you do to manage the county needs. And sitting at these countywide meetings, I see you have to make many decisions concerning the constituents of this county as a whole. It's quite a task. For my part, it would be daunting to research every request and decision you are tasked with in your role as Commissioners, and for that, I thank you. For the matter of the STEM ETJ, that for us is personal. It's personal for those who have signed the petition. It resonates with so many citizens of Granville County. We are directly impacted by any decision that's made on this matter. I'd like to think the matter is pretty much decided based on the responses I've seen of the residents. The residents are saying loud and clear, "We do not want STEM ETJ." I know you hear this. And in this instance, you can vote no, knowing that you're representing the residents who are impacted. It's not a county versus town matter. It's personal. It's about the property owners who are stating loud and clear, "We do not want STEM ETJ." And after this bid for the ETJ is decided, STEM will still go on. The town will be able to move forward with their vision, as they stated in their UDO, but it will be on a controlled basis, within their current boundaries, not expanding in this proposed way. And likewise, Granville County, I hope, will still manage the county business and help its residents maintain the rural areas in addition to this plentiful growth. It's not a pro or anti vote for development. We understand there will be growth, and we ask that the county maintain jurisdiction over the rural properties to protect our desired lifestyle, free from unnecessary restrictions. In closing, let your decision reflect your constituents, the property owners' voices, and vote no this sense to the STEM ETJ proposal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carson Welk, and I live on 2047 Stoneridge Drive in STEM. I'm a 22-year-old land and homeowner. Three years ago, I was blessed to be given a property from my parents' husband, from my husband's parents, for when we got married, to put a house and to raise our family on. My husband's father, my father-in-law's dream was to build enough land or to have enough land to put all of his children and grandchildren to live on. Very sadly and suddenly, both of my parents passed away a year and a half ago and left us to deal with everything. We vowed, me and my husband, to protect their home and their land and to honor it. As a 20-year-old with this responsibility, I didn't know what I was doing. I did have to learn everything. Standing here today, I will be overlooked and I will be judged for my age, but I do learn that I have a voice. Even as a 22-year-old, I understood what's going on, and I still understand what's going on. And I know the threat of, I know of the threat this STEM ETJ has on not just my property, but on my parents' property as well. Between being a preschool teacher and my husband owning his own lawn care business, and with the expenses of our parents passing, we don't bring much home. Therefore, if the STEM ETJ were to be passed, this will threaten not just our land, but our home and our finances, something that we would not be able to cope from right now. We go home nightly worrying about this. And it's not just me and my household that worry about this, but many of the other anti-ETJ people that aren't all here tonight, but we all face that same battle. From 20 to 40 to 60 to 80, we are all in this building for the same reason, to protect our properties. And that's the reason I'm speaking tonight, because I need to protect my property and fulfill the promise we left to our parents as well. I don't know your situation. You know what it will be about mine. But I do know that you're going to go home to a house tonight. Somewhere you call home, somewhere that's your safe place. Just know as you lay in your bed tonight, thinking about tomorrow, we are thinking about our tomorrow, stressing over our property and what's going to happen next. We're unsure about our future for our land, for our home, for our finances. And with this STEM ETJ coming into place, it would affect all of that, basically. It would take away what we have as home for my situation. So I thank you tonight for allowing me to speak. I do have, I do have some copies for records, but I thank you all tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Larry Daniel Eaton, 4688 Beersham Road, Oxford, North Carolina. I'm here tonight because I attended the Granville County Board of Commissioners meeting, special meeting on Recreation Plan on June 5th. Okay? I was sitting at the table with the rest of the people who were attending the meeting, and there was another seat there also. Then, the meeting was called to order, and then the presentation began. During the presentation, Ms. Karina, the Granville County Assistant County Manager, came over to my seat and asked me to move. And I asked her, "Why?" She said, "These seats are reserved," and there was no reserved sign on the table nor the chairs. I said, "Do you have a reason for me to move?" She said, "They are reserved." I said, "Well, there are some seats over there." There was another seat. I took pictures of it. And the moment hit me that I was just being asked to move from the table. The way she said it to me just made me, it was very humiliating, embarrassing to front of all of the Commissioners, all the other people who were attending that meeting. And I just really had a frustrated night. I went home and I started writing. And I took the letter down to the county board, county manager's office, on the next day, that Tuesday. And I gave it to the young lady who was sitting behind the glass doors, the glass window. And I asked her to give it to Mr. Cummings. Okay? And I'm gonna read my response here for what I have written for tonight, June 19, 4688 Beersham Road, Oxford, North Carolina. On June 6, I was hand-delivered a package letter to the Granville County Manager's office. Asked to speak to Ms. Depple, the African-American lady who was sitting behind the glass window, said Ms. Depple was on vacation. So I explained to her that the package of information that was needed to be given was important to Mr. Drew Cummings, county manager, for whom it was addressed to on the front. The lady replied that she would give it to them. On Friday, June 16, I called county manager's office at 2:54 PM, talked to Ms. Depple about the package that was hand-delivered to them on June 6. She explained that she was on vacation. I said to her, the lady in front, at the front window, said she would give it to them. Ms. Depple stated she would check on it and call me back, because she didn't know where it was. At 3:57 PM, I received a call from Ms. Depple. She stated that she could not find the package, and she would continue to look for it and call me back. On Monday, June 19, Mr. Cummings did call me back with, "Thank you. I appreciate you giving me that call back." And we did discuss this issue. But I still have feelings, and my feelings were hurt. I've never been in a public meeting or attended a public meeting that...
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Okay, let's move on to the next topic. Mr. Eaton, I will, I'm sure the county manager will get back with you and discuss it with you further. Thank you.
Good evening. The Home and Community Care Block Grant is our largest outside funding source. When I say "our," I mean the Department of Senior Services. It's allocated yearly for special services such as congregate and home-delivered nutrition, transportation, and in-home aid services, and a few others. Our allocation for the upcoming... Our allocation for the upcoming fiscal year is stated at $511,251, which is actually the current year budget. They have not given us an updated amount for the next fiscal year. We do believe it'll be larger, but we're using that as a placeholder until we can get the exact figure. This is a combination of federal and state money that's funded to us through the Area Agency on Aging, which is under the umbrella of the Cartra Regional Council of Governments. The local match is already included in the budget. I met with our Funding Plan Committee, which is a committee that is appointed by this Board, on May the 22nd. Commissioner Gooch was in attendance at that meeting, and it was our job to distribute that $511,000 between allowable services in the way that will best serve our senior population. In your agenda packet, you have a list of all the services and the recommended distribution of funds. We can move that money around throughout the year as needed. We are not, it's not set in stone. But we need your approval of the county funding plan that you have in front of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
More, is there any questions for Ms. May? What's the pleasure of the Board? She's recommending, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we do what she's asked.
Say. Okay, Ms. Hammond makes the motion that we will match the funds with the $56,806. Am I right, Ms. May?
Yeah, well, but what we will need you to approve is the way the money has been distributed between services.
That's what I meant to say.
And then it was seconded by Mr. Jay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. May.
Good evening. Mr. Bayless, the Sheriff's Department. The purpose of this action is the Grahamville County Sheriff's Office requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve the hiring of Robert David Fountain III as detention officer. Mr. Bayless is here tonight, along with, I think, Mr. Buster, the chief deputy. Am I correct? And so, take it away there, Mr. Bayless.
Yes, sir. The sheriff passes his regards. He's home, celebrating his son's birthday party and the June 19 celebration. So if it may please the Board, I'm going to present tonight. We're requesting the Sheriff's Office and the Board approve the hiring of Robert David Fountain III as a detention officer. Robert Fountain is the son of Sheriff Fountain. And pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-103, the Board of Commissioners must approve the appointment by such an officer of a relative by blood or marriage of near kinship than first cousin. Just a little bit of, I'd like to present a little bit of Robert Fountain III's background and his qualifications, if I may. Yes, sir. Robert Fountain III, as I mentioned, is the son of Sheriff Robert Fountain and seeks employment as a detention officer with the Grahamville County Sheriff's Office. Robert Fountain III is currently attending Greensboro College and is projected to graduate in December of this year with a degree in criminal justice. Additionally, from April through August of 2022, he served as a seasonal police officer with the Ocean City, Maryland Police Department, where he received provisional law enforcement certificate. And just a little bit on the training, Mr. Robert Fountain was duly sworn. He had full law enforcement authority as he served as a seasonal police officer for the Ocean City, Maryland Police Department. Through his training, he attended six weeks of consolidated criminal justice training at the Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy in Maryland, where he went over such topics as policy, ethics, use of force, firearms, criminal code, and law, and arrestive powers for law enforcement officers. If I may, just personally, I've had the opportunity to serve on hiring boards at the county level and at the federal level, and I want to say that Robert David Fountain III is highly qualified for the position as a detention officer. I think he will make a fine addition to the Sheriff's Office. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Buster to, unless there are any further questions, sir, to go over his reporting duties and what he will be doing in that particular appointment. Yes, sir.
When will the hire take place? Will he finish school and then be hired, or will he start right away?
We're looking for immediate employment, sir. He will be finishing up his, the remainder of his studies online, and then will be graduating in the term in December.
One quick question as well.
Yes, sir.
So this is an open competitive bidding process, open competitive hiring process? So there's standards and all that kind of stuff, right?
That's correct. My understanding, he's filled out the application with personnel, meeting all the requirements of such or that position.
Outstanding.
And I will say, just to go back on his appointment with the Ocean City Police Department, it was very rigorous. As I looked through their hiring process, they do a full background site test, polygraph. So it's fully, it's very competitive, and so to gain such an appointment is pretty impressive in itself.
I was making sure that ours is an open competitive process.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are current openings, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, in both the detention and deputy.
And has the sheriff taken all appropriate steps, or will he take all appropriate steps to ensure that after this detention officer is hired, that the sheriff alone can hire and fire? Is he going to remove himself from that process to ensure that it's, because of the relationship, that these will be handled in a different manner?
I'm going to let Mr. Chief Buster speak to those matters, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the sheriff, he will not have any direct supervision over his son. It will be transferred to the detention chief, chief jailer. He will not take place in any personal matters pertaining to his son.
Okay, very good. Does any other Board members have any other questions? Go ahead.
Have we run into this situation before previous sheriffs?
My understanding is that previous sheriffs have employed relatives. I'm not aware that any previous sheriffs have come and asked permission, as the statute requires to do that. But the clerk may be able to speak to us in a minute, it's better than I can, but I don't recall anyone during my tenure here asking for permission, as required by the statute.
Just for clarification, the previous sheriffs have hired, but they didn't come to the Board asking permission. Is that correct?
I can't say they didn't come to the Board. All I can say is I don't recall anyone coming to the Board and asking for permission. Dr. Kozart or Mr. Jay, if someone may be able to remember that. I don't remember. I do know that at least one previous sheriff had a son who was employed as a deputy, and I don't recall that coming before the Board. But if somebody else remembers that, they can correct me.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with Lieutenant Ryan. I don't recall a request of this nature coming before us, but I do know that there have been relatives who were next of kin working with the sheriff, the current sheriff.
So just to round out this conversation, read Mr. Bayless's comments. Is that Mr. Fountain III is highly qualified, will soon have a college degree, completed 251 hours of law enforcement training as provisional police officer in the state of Pennsylvania, or Ocean City.
Maryland.
Maryland. Excuse me. And the sheriff himself, and would have had the thorough background conducted, and to include the polygraph exam.
In the previous employment.
Right, exactly. So with that, Board, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the recommendation be approved to appoint Robert Fountain III as Deputy Sheriff of Grahamville County.
I think the request is for detention officer, not deputy sheriff. I'm sorry.
Yep. I'm sorry. That's right. I have the updated one.
So Dr. Kozart has made the motion that we approve the hiring, as the sheriff has submitted or made the request of the Board of Robert Fountain III. And do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Jay. Do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Bayless, and thank you, Mr. Buster. Is Ms. Hart here from Social Services? You want to present it, Drew? It doesn't matter. Our interim director, Ms. Mustin Lyles, is here and I think can speak to the item.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm Dana Mustin Lyles. I'm the interim director for Grahamville County DSS. So in your packet, there was a request. As you know, the Child Support Office has been anxiously awaiting to relocate to, across the street from 143 Williamsboro Street. We are doing this relocation to a new facility to provide updated work structure and environment for the public and staff. We are requesting approval for furniture and office equipment that is needed to ensure adequate needs for the staff and to serve the clients and customers of Grahamville You will find also in your packet, there are four companies where we have gotten quotes for prices to purchase the needed equipment and furniture, and the prices. The different companies are Uline. I don't know if you remember, Uline provided the furniture for the Creedmore office, but Uline did not provide any assembly or cleanup, and that's in parentheses beside that, as well as Office Depot and National Business does not do any assembly or cleanup afterwards. With Uline, we had to hire Taylor to come in afterwards and put the furniture together and then to haul off the debris. So we got a quote from Taylor Business. They're actually cheaper to purchase the furniture and equipment through them, and that includes the assembly and cleanup afterwards. And they are ready to move forward and order the needed equipment within the next three to four weeks. I understand that Child Support could possibly move in the next July or August, possibly, according to Scott, maybe, is what I last heard. So that is what our proposal is. And initially, we did not request this and make a budget request for this, because initially we thought we could use some of the Child Support funding that they have available, their incentive money. But after speaking with Myra Dixon, their control, from the controller's office, we were told we're not able to purchase furniture with that money, because furniture and that type of equipment cannot be personalized for just Child Support. And they said sometimes that county furniture and office equipment is recycled and used for other departments. So they turned us down.
So are the funds being used now all county funds? Or is there any federal source of funding for this?
It would be all county funds.
County manager and Mr. Attorney, does it follow all applicable purchasing policies and obligations?
I believe so. And we'll confirm that before we do spend any money.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation presented tonight, $33,884.17.
Okay. Excuse me, Dr. Kozart. Will you place in that motion a caveat that upon...
Upon review for attorney, from attorney and our county manager. Yes, sir.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Falls, please. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for your time tonight.
Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners, the purpose for this is seeking Board approval for brush grinding award and contract. The background for this was, the county receives wood waste in Oxford, at the Oxford and Butner Mulch material facilities from residences and commercial businesses. We typically grind these wastes that we receive once per year at both the Oxford and Butner locations. That's what this contract is for. A majority, a majority of the mulch is resold back to the public, specifically the Butner site. That mulch moves a lot faster than the mulch at the Oxford facility for some reason or another. But however, we do have a surplus of mulch. Sometimes it causes some management issues like fires, leachate coming out of the piles entering the water streams. So there is an option in this agreement to transport some overburdened mulch, overburdened type mulch in this proposal. So the current contract for brush grinding services expires this year. Staff reviewed the contract for brush grinding services for the Oxford-Butner landfill for 10 to five years. The county received a handful of interest with two submitted bids. So in your agenda package that you have before you are the two bids, a breakout of the two bids that you received. The compliance with the contract and purchasing policy, the RFP was advertised per the informal bidding guidelines specified by both the county policy and state law. Proposals have been reviewed by both the county attorney and manager. The funding is available for one grinding event per location for fiscal year 2324. The subsequent years' funding will be presented as a budget line item to continue the waste budget each year after, for approval. So it is a recommendation to recommend awarding the low bid to Simmons and Simmons Management at the quoted rates in the agenda package for the upcoming budget year as well as subsequent fiscal years. There is a not-take seat of $30,000 per grinding event per site per year. Just to summarize, these costs for the grinding and the transport for fiscal year 2324, the grinding costs will be $20 per ton for each location. And if any mulch was transported off-site, it would be an additional $10.50 per ton. And as you see, as the years go on, those prices increase a little bit. The staff will do everything possible to not have to transport the waste material off-site through maybe three mulch events, like we just had. Oxford side, we typically have a surplus of mulch for some reason, but the Butner side, we're always able to reuse that and sell it back as mulch. Thank you. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Board, do I have a motion? The recommendation is that the solid waste director recommends awarding the low bid to Simmons and Simmons Management at the below quoted rate for the upcoming budget year as well as subsequent fiscal years.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I'll second. First by Ms. Himmels, and second by Mr. Williford. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to appointments. To make, the purpose of this is the Aeronautics Authority of the City of Henderson, City of Oxford, County of Granville, and County of Vance. To make appointment, reappointment to Aeronautics Authority of the City of Henderson, City of Oxford, County of Granville, and County of Vance. The background is that the Aeronautics Authority of the City of Henderson, City of Oxford, County of Granville, and the County of Vance are responsible for construction, installation of equipment, facilities, and operations of the Oxford-Henderson Airport. The term of Jonathan Carver, Granville County representative, expires in July 2023. Mr. Carver would like to continue serving. There is an applicant, but what is the board's pleasure in regards to Mr. Carver continuing?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Carver for another term.
Mr. Williford makes a motion to continue with Mr. Carver. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Are there any term limits on serving on this board?
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. With that, we have a first and a second, and we had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Thank you. So, we're reappointing Mr. Carver. The next is the Board of Commissioners are approving the reappointments to the Granville County Fire Commission. In this case, at the bottom of the page, the terms of Andy Colberth, and then actually, I want to amend the record here. She, Andy Colberth, Northern Region, it should be SME, subject matter expert, fire and emergency services representative. Chip Fudge, citizen, it says Central Region Citizen-at-Large, and Richard Ray, Southern Region SME, subject matter expert, fire and emergency services representative, expire in July. Do we have a motion to reappoint all three?
Move to approve the slate.
Commissioner Karen moves to approve the slate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gooch, is that you, sir? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll just make sure for the record that on page 56, that we do include the word SME or subject matter expert, and on page 57, we do include the word after each the region for the SMEs, and we have citizens at large, which is covered. So, thank you. Next is the Granville County Jury Commission. I will read the background to you and then have a discussion. I'd like to make a point before we make any motions. To make an appointment to the Granville County Jury Commission. Background. The duty of the jury commission is prepare a list of prospective jurors qualified each year if the senior regular resident Superior Court Judge requests in writing that it do so. The term of Willie Billy Gupton expires June 30, 2023. Mr. Gupton would like to be replaced. There is one application on file, Victoria Bradshaw from District Two. A request has been made to have an individual from the Southern End, so there will be representation throughout the county on the jury commission. I did talk to Mr. Gooch this morning, and I believe that Mr. Gooch has someone that may from the Southern End.
I haven't got a commitment. We should have one next month.
So, I'd like, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to hold where we're at there and take no vote on that tonight if the board is okay with that. Okay. Any, anyone, any ascending passions? Okay. We'll move on. Next is the Granville County Planning Board. To make appointments to Granville County Planning Board, and then I'll skip down to the background, the terms of Adam Brewer, District Two, Howard Tyler, District Four, and Justin Malmstein, District Seven, expire. Mr. Brewer was appointed in January to fill an unexpired term. Mr. Millstone has resigned, Malmstein has resigned, and Mr. Tyler is retiring after 28 years of service. There are no applications, so District Two, Four, and Seven have openings. Unless there's someone, go ahead.
I spoke with Mr. Brewer this afternoon. He does, he would like to be reappointed. He was not under, he did not know he had to reapply.
Okay.
But I did speak to him, and he would like to continue.
District Four, do you have anyone in mind?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I hope to have someone by our next meeting.
And Mr. Gooch, do you have anybody in mind?
No, but I hope to have someone by next meeting.
Okay. So, at this time, we're going to be voting on a motion by Mr. Williford, waiting for a second. Mr. Karen, second, for Mr. Brewer to continue service. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the Cartar Workforce Development Board. I'll just go down further. The terms of Sarah Lloyd Gordon, I'm going to really mess this up pretty bad, but I'm going to give it a try. Agent you. Monica Sadowite, Pastor Philip Betts, and Tiana Chamberlain have been endorsed by Mr. Guerilla to continue with their reappointments. So, if the recommendation is, Lou Guerilla Workforce Development Director recommends the reappointments of Sarah Lloyd, Gordon Agnew, Monica Sadowite, Pastor Philip Betts, and Tanya, Tana Chamberlain. What's the pleasure, board?
How many did you raise?
I'll second the slate. Mr. Jay was the first, and Mr. Williford was the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you know?
Okay. So, we're going to go to Vance-Granville Community College Board of Trustees to make an appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Vance-Granville Community College. The trustees of each community college institution constitute the local administrative board of such institution with such powers and duties as provided by the general statute. By the way, Mr. Ren, while we're here, has that, has there been any changes to law through legislation, through legislature on this? Do you know?
I'm not aware.
Okay. The term of Deva Butler expires on June 30, 2023. Ms. Butler does not wish to be reappointed. There are two applicants on file, Victoria Bradshaw, District Three, and Keith Sharon, District Six. Pleasure, the board.
May I make a comment before? Ms. Bradshaw had applied for several things. She has been appointed to the Board of Adjustment, just for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll offer a motion to appoint Keith Sharon.
Commissioner Karen makes a motion to appoint Keith Sharon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Williford, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Sharon has been appointed. Thank you. Here's always a fun one, and we always enjoy this one every year. The NACO Voting Delegate. So, to select a NACO Voting Delegate, National Association of Counties Voting Delegate. The NACO Annual Conference is scheduled for July 21st to 24th, 2023, in Travis County, Texas. A voting delegate needs to be selected to represent Granville County at the annual business meeting. During the meeting, credentialed NACO members elect NACO officers, set our national policies and agenda, and conduct other activities. I need a recommendation for who that might be from our board.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that Commissioner Jay and Commissioner Himmels are going. And you know, Commissioner Himmels did this and did such a fantastic job. I was highly impressed with her ability to go in and to fulfill all her duties and to be there in place. So, it's with a lot of enthusiasm that I recommend Commissioner Sue Himmels to be our voting delegate.
And the second to that, I give a whole lot of enthusiasm for her.
So, I have a first by Commissioner Kozart, a second by Commissioner Jay from Ms. Himmels, and no words from Ms. Himmels. And what's the pleasure, board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Himmels?
Me.
Okay. Motion carries six one. Ms. Himmels is our representative. Thank you.
I didn't do anything wrong this year.
County manager, now the remaining, these items, the next three items are yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is approval of a contract for the Amplifund Grant Management Software. This is something that normally Terry Hobgood would be here presenting. He's our Public Information Officer and Grant Specialist, but he's on vacation this week, a well-deserved vacation, so I'll give a little background on the item. As noted, this is a grant-seeking and grant-management platform. We've been using one called E-CIVIS for quite a long time, and it has started to not meet our needs in a variety of ways, so we kind of went on the market and looked at a bunch of different platforms. We spent several months trying them out, and staff who were doing that testing identified numerous advantages to the Amplifund system. We also found out more recently that it comes highly recommended from Cherry Beckett, the auditing firm that is doing our federal and state grant funds kind of evaluation in the upcoming year. So, helpful that they find that it meets their needs and their clients' needs as well. And so, it's our recommendation that we approve the purchase of this software and authorize me to execute the purchase contract.
The county manager is recommending purchase access to Amplify Grant Seeker and Grant Management Platform and approval to associate the service contract. Do I have a pleasure of the board here?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor. With a first, Commissioner Kozart with a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, county manager.
Thank you, sir. So, this item is for approval of the template fire department contract. And this is, I'd like to say a few words about this contract. This is the culmination of approximately nine months of work. I want to thank the members of the Fire Commission, of each of the fire departments. I know there are a couple of representatives of our fire departments here tonight. Appreciate them being here. And our staff as well, especially Jason Reviss and Ken Reeves, for the sustained and substantial commitment that all of them have made. And I mean that for the Fire Commission, the fire department members, and our staff have all put a lot of work into this, that culminated last week in a, in a long three or four hour session to kind of hammer out the final details of the contract. I can say that pretty much every section of this contract has been gone over with a fine-toothed comb. I won't say that every section 100% meets everybody's needs, but it's as close as we can get, I think, to a consensus contract, and that was the goal of last Tuesday night, or Wednesday night's meeting. Again, this is a template contract. There may be one or two final tweaks, and I will also say that our municipal or quasi-municipal departments may also have slightly different contracts just based on their different situation. But again, I think the completion of this contract represents a critical step forward towards organized and efficiently funded fire protection in Granville County. I'm glad that we have wrapped this up, and with the boards. If the board chooses to adopt and approve this contract tonight, this will be put back in the, in the hands of each department for a final review and signature, and we can move forward into next fiscal year with signed fire contracts. And hopefully, you know, use of the additional fire tax funds that are available for daytime fire drivers and other enhancements, I think there's, now that we have hopefully gotten the contractual issues out of the way, I think the Fire Commission and the fire departments can refocus on some, some additional very important questions that remain to be answered here in Granville County.
Based on the county manager's recommendation, what is the pleasure of the board? Before I ask for vote, Mr. Ren, do you have any comments? Pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve after a three-hour and forty-minute meeting.
Mr. Gooch moves to approve.
I'll second that.
Have any further discussion regarding the contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I have no further items for this evening, Mr. Chair. County attorney, I have some reports from you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I'm having to follow along on my phone. My laptop is not functioning properly, so bear with me so I can get where I can see this. So, the first item that I have for you tonight is approval of the final order granting the major special use permit. At the regular meeting held on June 5th, 2023, the board approved the major special use application for Selco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless to place 199-foot lattice wireless communication tower with a fenced equipment compound on property owned by Lawrence and Anita Dixon, specifically identified as tax parcel map number 096600067049 on property located at 7133 Lester McFarland Road. The final order granting major special use permit document needs to be approved. You have in front of you tonight a copy of the order. This has been reviewed by the planning director. It's been reviewed by Tom Johnson, attorney for the applicant, and of course, our office has drafted it, so we're in agreement with it. We'd ask that the board vote to approve the order. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Mr. Jay moves to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next matter I have is to consider approval of an amendment to substitute equipment on the Charlie Stovall Road Tower on Mather County. Selco Partnership, DVA Verizon Communications, request an amendment to substitute equipment on the Charlie Stovall Road Tower. The request has been reviewed and approved by the county's consultant, Cityscape, and the planning director. The amendment will be, the amendment is before you tonight. Our office has reviewed and approved it, and of course, Verizon has reviewed and approved it as well. We'd ask for your permission to execute this amendment.
What's the pleasure, board?
What, Chairman, who approves?
Mr. Jay moves to approve.
Second.
Second. Mr. Gooch?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does that take care of your, anything else, county attorney?
I have a couple matters for closed session, including for personnel.
Okay. So, we'll go in closed session after we complete our business at hand, and the first comments tonight come from Commissioner, presentations by commissioners, Commissioner Tony Kozart.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Keegan, it's been such a pleasure, and wish you well. You listen and read the papers, as is with Jonathan, the other night, and you see the well-roundedness and just very, make you feel good about the future to see our young people doing so well. We're surely very proud of him. I want to say how much I enjoyed the two graduations that I was able to attend, J.F. Webb in South Granville, and it's, it's always their day. It never gets old to see the, the young people have their day, and just a lot of appreciation to the teachers and parents and administrators who, who made all that possible. And lastly, Auction Direct, going over there for that opportunity to have that opening, and it's, it's so exciting for our whole community, but when I think about our CTE program, particularly the auto mechanics, this just gives a great opportunity for us to connect, and I'm just excited for what it'll mean to our young people who are interested in that kind of work, to have that kind of facility with those kind of salaries right here in Granville County is really exciting. So, great, great job from our Economic Development Office. We thank them for all their work and everyone who had a hand in it, but it's really exciting to have Auction Direct here in Granville County. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Timothy Karen.
So, Keegan, it's been a pleasure meeting you and having you work here with us in Granville County, and I'm glad that on the day after Father's Day, your dad gets to hear some of the glowing things that this board has got to say about you. You've definitely left your mark here in Granville County in some of the projects you've been involved in, moved us forward, and always moving the needle forward is a good thing. So, I wish you best in your endeavors, and I hope- So I wish you best in your endeavors, and I hope that you speak some Japanese. Considering you'll be living there. So I've got some appointments that are open. We had some appointments made tonight. I'm glad for the people who were willing and able to fill out an application and sign up for that. I've got two outstanding appointments on the Human Relations Commission and as well as on the Economic Development Commission. So if you're interested in those things, or if you know somebody who is, lives in the southern end, please have them forward their application through the Clerk's Office. It's available on our website. It's not my appointment, but the Butner ETJ, we appoint as county citizens to represent on those boards. That's how the elected representation takes place for an ETJ is through this board for those that are already in existence. And I know in Butner, the ETJ there requires a more rural characteristic than does the county zoning, which is interesting. But there are two openings on the Butner ETJ Commission. Want to point out that, you know, we hear a bunch of public comment here this evening around what the perception is around things, and I feel bad that I may have failed in County One-O-One. You know, my email's available, my cellphone's out there, got a Facebook page. If you want to understand more about how to read, what would you say, general statutes or our current zoning that you're, you may find yourself under, we're probably gonna task the Management Department and I know Barry Baker with putting together a One-O-One question thing, like, you know, I want to put in a fence, do I need a permit? I want to dig a, completely dig up three acres of land in the Falls Lake watershed, do I need a permit? Those kind of questions. But the STEMNC.org, their last adopted UDO, which is the Town of STEM Unified Development Ordinance, is May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I can't find a difference between the current county zoning and what is proposed in the ETJ of STEM. But if somebody can find where there's a difference, please let me know. And when zoning may change, when it hits you is when you make a change. When zoning changes, it's not incumbent upon you to come up to the standard. The time that would happen would be when you wanted to do a project of some sort, and only on that specific project would you have to come into standard. So the fear of, I have to do all these things if the zoning changes is just not accurate. And I'm sorry that people are scared and nervous and all that kind of thing. I've got a slice of heaven that the city of Creedmore was thinking about maybe doing an ETJ expansion because currently their ETJ is within their corporate limits, being that they've got an annexed area, city proper, further than their ETJ. So Creedmore was looking at possibly expanding it to where I live, and nothing would change for me. All the buildings I have on my property are permitted. I have ten acres, I have goats and chickens, lots of chickens, fifty of them actually. I'm not a bona fide farm. I don't get a tax break. All the structures I have on my property had to be permitted because I'm not a bona fide farm. I couldn't put up a barn without having a permit. I did put up a shed, four bay, really nice structure, almost thirty feet tall. But anyways, I digress. When an ETJ or zoning changes, it's not gonna change anything for you until you change something. So the fear out there, I feel it, I hear it, I understand. Call me, we'll talk. It's a long diatribe. Appreciate those of you stuck around. Please get the word out to those who didn't. Thank you.
Commissioner Jimmy Gooch.
First of all, thank you, Keegan. We'll miss seeing you around and appreciate everything you've done for us. And I'd just like to congratulate all of the graduates here in Graham County, the public schools, the charter schools, send out a word of congratulations to everyone. You know, we're, we're probably gonna be facing some pretty rapid growth in the, in the future. Went back and looked at some figures. Growing up, Wake Forest was a sleepy little mill town, and I used to think of it as being about the size of Oxford, but I was wrong. Looking at the nineteen ninety figures, Wake Forest was just over five thousand population. Oxford was just over eight thousand. Looking at the twenty-one population, Oxford was eighty-eight, eighty-nine hundred population, just under nine thousand. Wake Forest was over forty-nine thousand, approaching fifty thousand. And I'm sure they experienced a lot of problems with roads, traffic congestion, and they're still facing those problems. But we want to be sure that growth doesn't overrun us. We can't, you know, we really can't stop growth if it wants to come. You just, you can try and control it, but watching Wake Forest grow in this number in just over thirty years, pretty scary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Commissioner Zelodyas Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to let you all know that, starting, uh, July one, Randy Campbell will be out directed at Cart. And also, just like I said, Keegan, we appreciate you, everything that you've done, and I'm gonna miss you, thank coming through. And thanks for living in, with them, for actually staying, staying in this one, and I appreciate, I appreciate everything you've done for the county, obviously, and let people like you, get your God's. Also, just like to let you know, and I bow Mount Falm's Board, being the last, uh, last one. Their Board is asking, this Board, what do y'all want us to start spending? You can answer tonight or maybe I do. Oh, you can give us, you can give us answers so I can give it back to them. Please do bow up next to me and, and July. She has, she has something, you got it. Please do, better than nothing. Also, I have a latent fault date to each and every man, and I'm sorry, ladies, uh, man's in, in it all. And hope you're in a once.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Thank you, Commissioner Rob Wilford.
Keegan, we'll miss you. Appreciate everything you did for Graham County. It was a pleasure getting to know you. And to the Hayes family, congratulations. I think that's wonderful.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I would like to thank Keegan and JJ's mom, and I know he does, he left early, but, and he doesn't have to go to school, because I watched him graduate on Saturday. So I know the child does not have to be at school, but he's an awesome child.
He was only in honor guard. He was a marshal because he's an honor society student.
Shh, don't tell anybody.
He was, he was the helper because he's a good kid.
Oh, okay, that's why I signed that. Oh, okay, well, tell him thank you, and thank you for what you've done for him, because he is an awesome young man with all that. It's not easy to get that Eagle Award, it really isn't, and to get, get it and beyond, it's awesome. So thank you for that. But because of both Keegan and JJ, we've had some youth on our different committees, and the committees I'm on, they have been there, they have voiced their opinions, they've made motions, they've made, you know, seconds, they've been involved, and I'm so very, very proud of these youth, that they're taking the time to be there. I also was at the Elder Abuse Awareness Meeting on Thursday, really made me feel like I was old, because they were walking better than I was out there. But it was, I learned a lot that day, and we do need to remember, it is against the law if we see or hear any, of any type of elder abuse and we don't report it. We could be in just as much trouble as the abuser, so just a reminder on that. I did make it to the Webb High School graduation Friday evening, the Saturday morning South Graham graduation, the Graham Central High School graduation, and even the Graham Academy High School graduation. I did not make it to any of the charter schools, because I didn't know about when they were, but I would have tried hard. But it's good to see these young people graduate and all the excitement out there, and the parents going, that's mine, that's my kid, you know, when they're, when they're supposed to say nothing, you know, and they break all the rules, because it is important, that's my kid. And so thank you, thank you very much for getting those young people through high school, and hopefully they will come back home to be part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very thankful for our volunteer fire departments. In fact, today they had, they fought a significant fire on Tom Hunt Road involving, I think, at least four or five departments, or four to five departments. And we often forget that, you know, these are men and women that work regular jobs, that they're not someone, they're not someone sitting at those stations right now. Getting this contract to this point is significant because now we begin to do the really hard work of how we're gonna continue to fund and the way we're gonna fund and then addition, placing some firefighters on vehicles for a better response time to the whole county, and I think that's significant. So for those volunteer fire departments in Graham County, thank you, thank you for their leadership, thank you for those that, their chiefs and others, and the work. I thank the county attorney and county manager for their due diligence and the work that you did on this was not, not easy, and so a lot, a lot of appreciation. It's not, I've said this many times, I'll continue to say it for all the right reasons. We're behind, and that's reality. And we're behind in the fact that many, many, many other counties, in fact, I believe it ended up being ninety-nine or ninety-eight counties initiated a fire attack so they could improve their fire departments, part of Graham County. We got a lot of ground to cover, we got a lot of ground to make up, and we've got to do everything we can to help our volunteers. I'd like to notice the South Graham Boys Baseball Team for being state runner-ups this year. Fantastic run, a lot to be proud of in Southern Graham in regards to athletics. Very happy with our economic development team, Auction Direct USA, it's incredible, bring a high-paying, high-skill jobs here to Graham County. I am hoping that we'll have some more announcement, county manager, for the end of the month or in the coming weeks or months to come. Keegan, as always, thank you for being a gentleman. I wish you the very best in your career to come. I know that you'll do outstanding work wherever you end up. Ms. Hayes, thank you and your husband John for doing an outstanding job with your son JJ. I know that one day that he will represent our country or our community in a way that you'll be very proud. We had the privilege, myself, of Dr. Kozart and Ms. Hayes going to meet with Janie Preddy over on Preddy Road. Ms. Preddy is not feeling well. She's been over thirty years educating our children, she's a high school principal, really an educational giant in Graham County, particularly Southern Graham, and we presented her at her home with her family, a proclamation acknowledging the fantastic work she's done on behalf of the citizens of Graham County to educate our children. Mr. Baker, I'm really hoping that we can get with their campo and we get that stuff getting going in regards to the Highway Fifty-Six meeting. I know you're gonna be all over it, because I'm gonna be with you right there, but thank you, and hopefully we can get the study from Butner to Lewisburg and get that approved so that we can identify what we can do to get that corridor date moved up. It's two thousand and forty-five, it's too late. And so with that, I'd like to thank those people that are here with the ETJ and the STEM concerns. We thank you for coming. We're not dismissive of anything that you're saying, we're listening. The reality of it is that it's not formally come to our Board. Until it formally comes to our Board, it'd be inappropriate for us to, to discuss it in a manner that would be unfair to either body. And so that's why you don't have a commitment from this Board one way or the other at this point, because it's not come to our Board. But we welcome your conversation, and we welcome your comments and your concerns. With that being said, are there any other matters that could come before the Board before we close this meeting and go into closed session? Any other motion that we go into closed session?
Somebody.
Mr. Wilford?
Second.
Mr. Kozart. All in favor?
Aye.
We're going into closed session after a ten-minute recess.
Thank you.